Board of County Commissioners, Board Work Session for Wednesday, April 9, 2025. It's 10:06 a.m. My name is Ty Manther, Chair of the Board, Vice Chair Wayne Fornier, Commissioner Carolina Mejia, Commissioner Emily Claus on Zoom, Commissioner Rachel Grant to my left, County Manager Leonard Hernandez, and we got team here for specific items, staff team from Central Services and Facilities. Written public comment can be received up to two hours in advance of this meeting and would be distributed to the Board of County Commissioners. Action may be taken at this meeting. We do have virtual attendance available on the Thurston County YouTube channel. We're here for up to two hours if needed. And first up is an executive session for approximately 60 minutes estimated pursuant to RCW 4231-101B, "Consider Selection of a Site or Acquisition of Real Estate by Lease or Purchase." Public knowledge regarding such consideration would cause likelihood of increased price. Courthouse Complex, next steps is the topic, and board action may follow. It's 10:07, so we will start the executive session and be out at 11:07 to either extend or to take up the remaining items on the agenda.
Okay, it's eleven twenty-one. Took us a minute or two to get our livestream back on, but the executive session is complete. Direction's been given to staff to move forward on some additional steps related to the courthouse proclamation and the courthouse planning that we've been working on. So that's all we can move forward from here, and there's no formal legislative action to be taken. So next up, we'll go to item two, Commissioner Items. The first item there is collaboration with Experience Olympia Beyond. Thanks to our central service team.
Thank you. Well done, team. Thanks, Chair. Commissioners? I have the privilege of engaging with staff at Experience Olympia Beyond. As you know, they're in the process of recruiting for an executive director. Just wanted to report out that the team that's doing the recruitment also reached out to me as county manager just to provide some stakeholder input on what they would be looking for in a new executive director. But the conversation I had with staff is their desire and our desire to have a closer working relationship with Experience Olympia Beyond, leading up to the hiring of a new executive director. There's a lot of partnerships that Thurston County and our VCB undergo, and I think that we have a chance to strengthen that. And so they, and their staff, and I came up with the idea of having a meeting with a couple of their board members and a couple of our board members to get that conversation going. I know there's been some perspectives about ways we can improve our connectivity with the Experience Olympia Beyond as a VCB, and the marketing of our county, and the engagement on what programs are important for us, what do we want to see from tourism side. And so I'd be looking for commissioners to see if they're too interested in joining that, and then we can go forward. I'd recommend keeping it at two so that we don't have a quorum issue, and therefore, we can have that meeting. They're going to, I believe it's a couple of members that are interested in meeting with the county, and the whole premise of that is to talk about ways where we can engage better, and the process of how we fund and how the money comes through, what are priorities from the county side, et cetera. So with that, Chair, I'll hand back over to you.
Commissioner Fornier, use your hand up to speak or to say you're interested in serving?
Yeah, I guess both. I've had a lot of, I got a lot of background working with the EOB. I have a really, I have a great amount of respect for what they do and what they could and should do, and I'd like to, I'd like to participate in that discussion.
Commissioner Mihia?
Thank you. I also am entrusted in participating in this. I was, when Annette came on as the new director, had several meetings with her, was part of the interviews of the Destination Master Plan, and kind of did the whole process with them on, on kind of the creation of that. And, you know, I have been very involved with Experience Olympia Beyond. I did their VCB training and got certified through them. I also participated in the agri-tourism. And so I just, just seeing kind of through this path, I would like to be engaged with them in those conversations, especially seeing the opportunities that are coming up ahead and shaping kind of what, what we would like the county really. I've seen some of the shortfalls, some of the things they've done great, and I want to really be involved in those conversations.
Commissioner Grant?
Yeah, and so I'm gonna throw my name out there too, and here's why. I'm really, the one thing that I haven't got to do yet, or I feel like I'm missing a part of kind of this in the last few months has been on the economic, on the side of like, you know, I don't really have any assignments on where I'm involved with the Chamber of Commerce or economic, kind of the regional collaboration of some of these kinds of things. The other thing that's really, you all know that I'm extremely active, and, you know, when it comes to my different voice, I bring a different voice to this kind of thing. And I'm really interested in being able to kind of understand more so how all of these things are connected. And because I haven't been doing like EDC or any of these other pieces, this would be a good experience for me to be able to do that, and also to be thinking about, what is the voice of, again, it's the people? And what are the different Experience Olympia things that have been going on that we could be focusing on besides what we've been doing? And so that would be my interest in, and really, and also just being able to kind of tie all this stuff together. I feel like I'm missing a piece in some of our economic stuff, so that's my deal. So let me do it, Wayne.
Commissioner Fornier?
Commissioner Grant, I think that's great. I'd love to talk to you about it, fill you in on it. I, I really would like to be a part of this because I do serve on those boards that you're saying you don't have experience with yet. This is wrapping up this, or I guess doing this interface with EOB is, it's really a critical point. Having, I think it's important that I have that historic kind of background of where they've gone in the last year or two, and how we kind of need to get them back engaged in a way that is, that is meaningful with some of the regional efforts. So, you know, I, again, you know, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm really, it's really important to me that I, that I do get that opportunity. So how are we to decide? We can decide, but if, if you wanna, if it's a desire to understand kind of the inner workings a little better, I'd gladly have that discussion with you.
Commissioner Grant?
Yeah, you know, and I guess I would say that, I mean, one of the things that, you know, I've just been kind of, I'm just gonna share how I feel, you guys, but that, that I get that, and if, and if I understand if like one of you is there so that you bring that back perspective into things and help me come along. But I, you know, there's been, I feel like it's kind of the same group of you that are doing all of those things, so like, like Wayne and Ty go to all of the regional, or the mayor's stuff, and like, you know, and you and Carolyn, they kind of have this other thing, and like, it's kind of all, Chamber of Commerce and economic stuff is all kind of assigned over to you guys, and there's not like, it's, you're bringing the voice of us, but I don't feel like there has been a single opportunity for me to be involved in any of those conversations. So I'm just kind of like, I don't, I don't care if we find a different way to do that, and I'm okay giving this up, but I just want you guys to know that that's kind of one of those areas where I feel like I have, would be able to be involved and be able to be tracking what's going on because I'm not getting that information.
Well, I'm confused. I'm confused on like the whole aspect because like, for me, like, I'm not in any EDC, you know, but I'm constantly reaching out to them, I'm going to all the chamber events, and having those connections with them, and the same thing with EO, like Experience Olympia Beyond. I've been just touching point with them as the years have gone by, not necessarily because I'm assigned to a committee, but more of my external outreach to these organizations, and, you know, in part, that's why when this was going on, I got contacted by two of their board members. And part of that history has been the fact that, you know, in the past, I know Commissioner Fornier advocated for having a member from the county at the EOB, and at that time, we were declined, and come to find out that, you know, the same thing happened to other jurisdictions, but that has just been part of like, I guess, my outreach, not necessarily because I'm involved in certain committees or not. It has just been kind of me reaching out to different organizations and asking them, you know, how we can be better partners at the county level. So again, I, I would just again demonstrate my interest for this.
Okay, totally understood. And, and I guess, you know, and I'm totally fine with that. If you guys wanted to be the ones to do it, I just kind of wanted to, now I haven't, because I haven't been on a committee, or I'm not assigned to any of them yet, I haven't had a chance to even begin building those relationships because I don't have the opportunity to actually bump into anyone, you know, in that realm. So I just want to put that out there to you guys, like as another opportunity comes up or something like that, I would like to be considered, because I, I mean, I just don't have a, any, I know, it's kind of like, I don't, I even get invited to, to some of those, some of these other things because I just haven't had a chance to build those relationships or have a reason to even hang out with any of those guys. So that's kind of where I'm saying in the next couple of months, if there's something else, like, keep me in, please.
Can I, I also just want to like point out, that's, like, some of those assignments, that's how they're assigned. Like, I don't, I've never had anything to do with Orca. You know, I know what it is. I know people that are on it, but that's, I'm not assigned to that, so it doesn't, you know, I'm not, I'm not sweating it if I don't have like involvement with it, you know what I'm saying? If that makes sense.
It does, but that's not, that's not kind of how, I mean, I don't think like that. I kind of want to have that well-rounded. I want to know a little bit about everything going on because we all have to make decisions about everything all the time. And this is fine, and, and, I mean, I just need you to know that, that that's my perspective on things of like, you know, by, by this time next year, I'd like to have some more, you know, opportunity to interact with some of those other, other boards and commissions that are, you know, dealing with those.
Yeah, I'll make a commitment to you that, like, if you want to, we can set a meeting up, and I can kind of brief you on all the different committees that I sit on, and kind of, you know, like, I guess you give, give you a perspective of like what they do, kind of, you know, what maybe, what history is relevant to us, how they interact with us. So like, I, I'd love to have that conversation.
I would say two things. One is, this is kind of a specific thing, and I would just like prioritize, like when we do board assignments next year, you know, just show, if I'm the one doing it as chair, like putting it together, just say, hey, I really like to do EDC this year, and we usually trade, you know, or whatever it is that you think would be most useful for your well-rounded knowledge. Secondly, I would say, if you set up a meeting with Michael Cade,
Oh, I know.
And tell him what you're interested in, I guarantee you, he will find a thousand ways to plug you into anything.
Yeah, and honestly, I know, and honestly, Michael Cade and I have had, I'm with him tomorrow. And we've had, we've had to have bump our meeting like a million times. I'm just, yeah.
Just tell him, hey, I want to learn more about, you know, this, and like, he's got a, I mean, he's just, he's like your, he's like your, your team captain to like shoot you into the right shoots that you want to go through. But anyway, so are we kind of, I'm not throwing my hat to the ring.
I just, I mean, definitely, you know, I just hope that you guys will kind of keep us, I don't, I guess that's the other issue I kind of have a little bit of, is that we don't, we don't really have a great report out on like what, what, you know, knowing what everyone's doing. Yeah, we have the commissions and boards updates, but we don't really utilize those in a way that is like, yeah, here's all the cool stuff going on. And so I do want some, you know, Wayne, like you said, it would be nice if, you know, you and, you know, and Carolyn and even Ty could help me a little bit, you know, and say like, hey, come along to this thing that's happening, you know, and so that I can have a little more of just more than what I've been doing.
We can beef up our.
Yeah, I, I literally read the minutes yesterday for the EDC meeting, just, I'm, I'm, I'll, I'll try to do better, but I literally read everything that the EDC talked about. And in that report out, there was an invitation that I shared with everybody to upcoming, like three upcoming events that they have going on. So I, I mean, I tried to do that, but I'll, I'll do better.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we're good.
So we have Commissioner Fornier and Commissioner Mihia, it sounds like.
Okay, we'll get, working on scheduling that time with the EOB, and I look forward to, from that conversation, having a report out and bringing either staff or some board members back for full conversation with commissioners about how we're going to work stronger together. So more to come on that.
Awesome. Let's go to the next item, letter to salary commission.
There was a request, thank you so much Maria for joining us, for a letter from Commissioner Mihia was the genesis of the idea, and then there was some conversation before spring break about maybe making a little bit of an adjustment. So I really appreciate Commissioner Grant for, she quickly put her thoughts down, and we were able to get that out.
Except for then, they made a whole article about it saying it anyway. Did you guys see that?
Yeah, we did, yeah.
Just to be thought about next time, all of us.
Yeah, for sure. And then Commissioner Fornier also asked for one addition to be made, which is highlighted there. And so Chair and Commissioner members, we have a draft with some suggested changes and input from other members of the commission. And so we're ready to review that and take any input or facilitate the next step.
Okay, well, I hadn't, I hadn't seen Wayne's edition. I wrote my own edition, which is almost verbatim, but it's worded a little differently. I don't know if one's better than the other, but it's basically the same concept.
Do you mind reading your edition?
Uh, yeah, mine said, "We respectfully request commission not approve any salary increase for the Board of County Commissioners this year." Calm. for the Board of County Commissioners this year, comma, and do not make recommendations to increase salaries for the other county elected officials," period.
Commissioner Fornier, are you good with that recommendation?
I mean, it's, they're just different, it's the same idea with different words. I don't really care.
Read yours again, because I think you say, "And do not make a recommendation." That seems kind of unclear, but.
"And do not make recommendations to increase salaries for other county elected officials." Um, yeah, and I would just say, you know, like, I, I don't do this lightly. I, I don't actually really, I don't really like this approach, but I think the situation that we're in is significant enough that it, it's, it's appropriate. You know, because in general, you're, you're, it's an interference with a process that then has ripple effects, like that unintended ripple effects over, over like longer frame, timeframes, but.
That you have commented on, because for a while commissioners went without a cost of living for some time. And that puts you, starts to put you behind, because it's incremental, so I agree with you that.
Well, then, and it's not just us, it's us behind it all, so then you have, like, we're a little different, because we're like these independent commissioners, but there's department, there's offices with electeds and deputies and depression and succession planning and all that. And so you get in, so then you, you get that off track, and then it's politically untenable to give yourself a catch-up, because where the employees got a COLA, even in tough times, we gave pretty, pretty, you know, there were, anyway. It's not a great approach, I just want to say, but it, it's, I understand where it's coming from, and I'll support it with the, in, in this particular very difficult year, which is looking like the most difficult year of the time I've been on the board.
And that's an important thing to note, is that employees will, because they're negotiated contracts, will always get their COLAs. I, so that, the organization outside of the electeds that are affected by this are getting those COLAs, and then there also is the step increases for employees. And then for our department heads, there's that merit increase that they get, too. And so I think, Commissioner Grant, to your point, the way some of this has been, been reported out in the paper isn't actually reflecting the dynamics that are at play.
Right.
And, you know, when you all say yes to a certain percentage, and the employees are getting the 3% COLA increase, but they're also gaining their step increases on top of that, which is, is not always portrayed, it's, because it's not always an apples to apples. So I say that because it's, it's a larger conversation, and those increases for the electeds are important to keep things organizationally moving forward. And you're right, Commissioner Minzger, when you touch that, it does start throwing a wrench in it, and we're able to tell you it is hard to go back and try to fix things when you go a period of time without giving those increases.
You know, I'll just echo, I, I think I'm kind of with you, Ty, on the fact that, you know, I also agree it's not the best, you know, not the best way to go about it. However, I'm okay doing it this year, it's totally great, but I do hope that next year that we would take a look at compression, we would take a look at, I mean, there, there became a point in one of my old jobs where the supervisors were making less than the employees, because we had to take cuts on non, you know, you understand what I'm saying. But, but it's happened, it happens a lot more than we think, that, that we, that we don't give at-will positions an increase and the, and the other ones. And so we want to, you know, I'd love to see numbers on that at some point in time. It doesn't have to be this year.
Okay, so we're thumbs up. I'm sending forward your letter.
Okay, thank you, Board.
Okay.
Good.
One last item that's, I'm the Commissioner Items, I don't know if you're classing here, but I, I just don't want to get too far back. There's been numerous inquiries made to me as chair about the county manager evaluation process. He's passed his year anniversary, and so, yeah, whoohoo, birthday, birthday party.
Yeah.
So my proposal, after kind of talking through it, was to kind of, for this year, keep the same kind of general process, and, you know, Commissioner Grant's brand new, so, you know, basically, so giving a little extra time and giving me a little extra time to put all together. I'm gonna be here during the commissioner recess, so I can work on it late June, early July, bring it to the board and, and kind of have a, like, end of July target date to finalize. Is that, some, county manager, thumbs up. Does that work for everyone?
I think that's a very prudent approach. I think at that point, based on your time and the process that's been followed in the past, it can be time-consuming, so, thank you.
And that will be, yeah, and just to recap that process, it involves me talking to the county manager, the, a selected number of director reports, probably assistant county managers, and then getting input from the other board members. Again, I just kind of put all, I'm not doing it, we're doing it. I'm just putting it all together and taking the lead, and then we'll, you know, we'll go over it with county manager, and, and then it goes from, and Maria just not there. Maria leads me, Maria leads me through what the next steps are for, we sign it, Leonard signs it, and it goes from there. And if we want to talk about a different process in the future, I'm open to that. But just since we're at that point, we're at a year, new commissioners, I say we just stick with what we've done in all the time that I've been here. Commissioner Grant?
So, you know, and I would just say that you guys will hear me say this over and over again, so it's just gonna become a broken record, that I wish things were in writing. I wish we had a process. I wish that, so like, the process that's in your head should be on a piece of paper. So, and that's not just for us, that's for you, you know, because anyone in management should have, be able to understand, you know, what they're expected to do, what are their expectations, and what, and, and when they were, they're going, and when and how they're going to be evaluated, you know? And so that's the, the part that I think is really important. So I would also encourage us that, you know, if we're gonna do it this year, that we get, you know, we just get this kind of a more memorialized, this is the process that Thurston County uses to, and maybe it's not just, you know, it could be any of our top leaders. And, and that, and then that way, the public knows that we have a plan, we follow it, and we meet the timeline, so that by next year, if it's, we decide to do it in July, then it's every July, you know? And I think that that's also something that's really important to me, that, you know, coming from a management background, I think about, like, we made this very serious process. This is a very serious process. And, and it should be considered, and for, it's also dependent on raises. You know, sometimes, you know, some of these positions would be dependent upon raises. So if I don't get my, if I didn't get my evaluation, which happened to me last year, I didn't get my evaluation, because my, my boss went on maternity leave, I lost out on two months of increase. We couldn't convince them to go back. So those are the kinds of things that I think about when, when we're considering, you know, doing these kinds of things. So just hoping we can think about, maybe when we talk more about bylaws and talk more about just getting things more memorialized, I'd like this to be something that we keep in there.
I'm open to that conversation.
And part of the reason I think the evaluation was not, usually by this point, it is completed, but it was, I don't think fair for the county manager to be here less than a year and for an evaluation to be done. And, and so that's kind of why, you know, it's being done a little bit later than, than what, you know, we usually do it. But, I mean, the process has been pretty well laid out for all the years. I, you know, I was chair on my second year, and I, you know, was able to go through that process with the county manager at the time, and, and it was pretty well laid out. I met with Maria, and she was able to give me kind of the form, and, you know? So is it like written down? Like, for me, it's like, if we're gonna write everything we're doing down, then, you know, it just, like, what are we gonna be dedicating our resources to? I think the process is pretty much well laid out, but if we're just gonna have everyone writing down every little kind of pinpoint, I, I just feel like, again, what are we dedicating our resources to?
Yep, I'm good.
Real quick, county manager, you guys saw me? I thought I saw your hand.
Oh, no. Okay.
I, I'm just gonna say that it was to save the emails going back and forth and all of the discussion behind the scenes. But that's where, where I get really, like, I'm like, oh, I won't ask the question if I know the process, so I won't have to spend any of my effort and time wondering what's going on. If I know that this is what we're gonna do, and this is how we're gonna do it, that's why we memorialize these things. That's just the expectations that I bring from, you know, the years that I've been involved in, in public service, that I'm used to having that, so it's very confusing, very hard for me not to have that already. You know, to me, it would be, it's already written out. We just like, this is what you do, and this is how we do it. And, and so that's, I just want to say that that's kind of, I'll be a broken record, probably, but it's, it's just something that just makes things easier, so that nobody has to argue about it.
Commissioner Fornier, did you have, are you comfortable with what I laid out, or do you have any comments?
No, I'm good, I'm good with it.
Okay. County manager, anything? Uh, no. Okay. Anything else before we adjourn? All right, thanks, everybody. Good, good conversation.